We want to go out. Why? Oh, it's nice. Go for deer.
I, I was just. Was waiting for the fight. It's a good thing to be the thing. Yeah. I'm using some.
The time is six P M. Letter and rise and join.
I can see. You had this. And to. Patient. Neither does. In this.
That the record show the board is all in attendance. Is there a motion to go in for a public? I think you're going to talk with him. You have to speak a whole lot louder.
I will say that this is probably the last meeting that I can use this.
Yay. Okay. Uh, there's a motion by, okay, motion by Scott, second by the executive on to our public hearing. For imposing a transportation impact fee for Wisconsin State statute election sixty-six point oh one seven. Is there anyone to speak on the issue for the public here?
Good. Yeah. We should have.
That's why I was said, that's why I wasn't using the buttons, guys. I was gonna do it manually. But I got perules.
I was wrong.
It's two. Motion's carried. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this issue? Going once. Going twice. Going three times. To speak on, on the. They speak on the trans.
What is more speaking?
Transportation. On the transportation issue. I don't think he wanted to speak on the impact fee where you want to talk on the other issue. Right? Um, hearing of no one to speak at the public hearing, sort of. Motion to close the public hearing and go on forward those second. Motion by Scott, second by Julie. With ballot. If you do any better, just join. You know. Mine was doing the most. I was pushing harder, pushing harder. All in favor say aye. I'm opposed. Motion's carried. Yeah, I'm not gonna deal with buttons all night. They're not working, guys. Okay, correspondence communications from board and staff. I sent through an email, blind copied the board in on my meeting with the Central Region Planning Commission, M O P. Do you have any, have any questions on the information? No, when I get some information about when, uh, the head of the director of the agency wants to have a sit down. I'll send, shoot that out to everybody. So we'll all be on the same page for that. Any other correspondence or communication?
Just there, but didn't you put more on your thing? Need to figure out how we department, like. Opened in. And on the county and out of the county depends on the thing this. There should be real, not really turning. Like Bob would take me right now, I think like that, that would be cool. That's already ridiculous.
That's what he central is going to be studying. So, um, they're, they're looking at, for those of you that don't know, it's a, uh, certainly, well, I request that he central doing traffic study. From four forty-one all the way to highway fifty-five. And that was already on their, their schedule, their agenda because of the new school. Connaught's new school. And Connaught is putting in an eighty. Always sending down the residence subdivision in the same area. So they were already going to be looking at how they could include that. All the way and, uh, City of Appleton was there, uh, the mayor was there. Of him counting. And that kind of, so if all the stakeholders will be involved. Okay. No other correspondence or presentation? All right, very good. Um, you have the minutes of the November twelfth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Not motion by Scott, second by, no, it is a correction. Oh. He's stuck. Trying to get this clearly. Okay, we're gonna have trouble this all night. We have way too long an agenda. I know about this all night. I'm not gonna do it, guys. It's too long. Matt, you have an addition?
I do. Uh, item seven. B. The explicit motion failed number four. Seven B should be more detailed. Three point.
Any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the message as protected?
From whom?
Motion by Nat, second by. Somebody? By Mike. All in favor say aye. If you want to push your button, motion carried. What do you want us to do? I was gonna say we can move on from this. If we go through this, thank you. Okay. How about comments? Ray, did you want to come and speak before the?
You want, well, we'll pick you to clear this.
That's what I was thinking is if we, if we vote once, we'll get it cleared. You will not Julie. Mark, you got a proper button. Okay. We don't. But just, you know, we have more problems with us. It doesn't happen. We're not, we're not gonna understand. Fight the buttons all night.
As if you're asking, or you would be.
Yay, yay.
Hey. Pretty smooth. Send nine five six six. Um, I'm here. To voice my opinion on L B's property across road for me. I'm still under the understanding that a couple of people up on the board. And the planning committee. Um. Still wanna make all Mel's property, commercial property. I'm here saying I wish that the property. Would stay residential, that Mel planned on doing. Um, I'm already putting up a commercial property behind me. Um. I feel. That if that its own commercial property. Like the triangle was done over by salt. That's own commercial property and then all of a sudden it. Slap. Industrial. That the property across road for me would be going commercial and then. Popping it to industrial. Which I do not like, which I do not want. Which I'm afraid that the property behind me, it's gonna get someone industrial. Which I do not like and I do not want. Um, you already got shift work going on back there. You got people working at midnight, seven days a week behind me. You got people living in a place back there. Um. No. I feel the village. Don't take care of the property. So on the property. Prep on the property. Um, I would like, um, residential across the road for me. I know Peter Bebel, he was here voices in his opinion. That chair, you have it on record that she sent her letter and voice and that she would like the commercial. Um. I, I don't know. It's. If the people on the board member would like that zone commercial. So badly. They keep telling Mel, he's gotta do traffic reports and this and that and raking him over the coals left and right. This village. Purchased the property over by salt for nine hundred, whatever thousand dollars. This village purchased the property where the ballpark is supposed to go. The village purchased the property over on Colony Trump app. Why don't you say, let Mel Bay set the price on his property? And the village can purchase the property from Mel Bay. And then maybe do what you want. But Mel Bay owns a property now. I feel you let Mel Bay do what he wants with the property. Feel the village purchases the property. Which they seem to be turning into realtors now. I don't know how many. Pieces of parcel that a person's got to sell to have a realtor license. Maybe that's worth checking into. But I would like it, so on residential property across the road for me. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then someone started to write their name and then they cross it off. So does anyone else want to speak in color to the patient? Here in a night. We're gonna move on to reports. So, um, you have. Fire chiefs report. Any questions or comments? Here in another, we're ready to move on. All right. Uh, you have the sheriff's department report. Before you, any questions or comments? Here in a month, everybody move on. All right, there you go.
Super bad. Now I just wanna thank you, Sheriff, for our hard work and solving the, I guess.
Yes. Yeah. All right. We have. A report from our interim coach manager, Russ. Any questions or comments? Here in a month, moving on. We have the report from Chad for the planning and zoning.
All I have is new is coming around, taking one.
Our shirt.
Our shirt on the fighter station.
All right.
That was asked for by Trumpy Bolton at the last meeting. And to go along with this, we're doing some video tours. So we would, we have done the Department of Health works and given them the fire station. They're both of them on white. H C C the. Uh, state issues and some of the other concern that we have, um, and I will continue to track the progress of the projects. I mean, they actually probably never work with those two.
Great. Any questions or comments, guys? Are you ready to move on? No. Yes. Yeah, are we ready to move on? You're not giving me a head shake. There we go. All right, we're moving on. Who? Parks and trails.
One other quick thing. So the fun. We, we, I have some website issues that will be broken with Randy because our new website probably will provide them in the next couple of weeks. And the Indians management module is all done and we're all trained. So we're gonna start training, um, each of you and hopefully the board meeting in January, we're voting through many co-person going through these. But so stay.
That'd be great. Perfect. All right, Chad, parks and trails.
Nothing new and they're losing.
Any questions or comments, guys? All right. Public Works and Engineering, any questions or comments? Here in a none, moving on. We have Vicki's report. Any questions or comments? We're in a none. We're moving on. We have Brandon's for torch. Any questions or comments? There in a none. We're in moving on. Well, maybe we won't be here till midnight. Okay, we are two, several of those in flame. So a motion for proof the remember those complaints. We're gonna try the buttons. We invite. Darling, Julie, Julie, second by Mark's me. Yeah, yes, it's, it's, no, that's okay. Any discussion? Valid. As the record show, the motion is approved unanimously. Okay, we have the appointment of Brandon to go in New Mashasur. There are more. Motion by. Matt, second by Julie. Any discussion? George ballot. Motion's carried unanimously. All right, there's not a key. Hold on, this is Alyssa. The others. We are so glad to be on.
Alyssa, if you'd raise your red hands, you'd have for me. I state your name.
Hi, Alyssa Benupren.
Having been appointed to the Office of Treasurer.
Having been appointed to the Office of Treasurer.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office in the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
That's all my very heavy heavy.
All right. So there is no old business wrecked. No old business. So we are moving on to new business. First is the zoning map resigning for Harrison Commerce Park. Chad, you want to speak to this?
Uh, sure. So this is the property on County Highway end that the board has seen, uh, multiple types. Um, currently is the single family residential, uh, was it overlay and generally altered. We're reselling with parcels to community, we need a commercial in order to develop a commercial district for the. Village. So the planning commission, uh, approved the zoning map amendment. So staff is recommending.
Let's see, there's a motion by Matt, seconds. Oh, wait. Again. Studies. Motion by Matt, second by Scott. Were approved. Any discussion? Valid. The record show the motion is carried to approve unanimously. Our banner, that Harrison Commerce Park. Yeah.
So this is the same item. Um, this is a little bit flat for that. And the extension of Homestead Lane all the way through to Manitowoc Road and then Commerce Drive, which will serve as kind of mid. Stream between Manitowoc and Schmidt Roads. Um, the planning commission kind of proved this. One thing I will note, there is some wetland issues on blocks three, four, and five, particularly that toward. Um, so we'll be working in our, uh, similar to when we require other developers to mediate those weapons to make them less. But other than that, it's a fourteen, fourteen line subdivision. I will say that in lot twelve and then it gave into a player's.
There's a motion by. Matt, second by Scott to approve. Any discussion? Or to ballot. And motions carried unanimously. Very good. We are up to the zoning map amendment for North Shore Bridge. Yeah.
So this is just to add some parcel off of Rich Lane on the bars. So there's this. Our sole even the, uh, future land has been so as zone as business part. Um. There is some discussions going on to sell the northern half of this property to, uh, our data centers. Um, that the southern half, the developer are, didn't have an interest in. So we're looking to, uh, find out some lots and loan that break clean. Finding commission approved and set.
Well, sir, motion don't grow. Motion by Julie, second by. And happy, any discussion? Valid. Record show the motion is carried unanimously. Certified surveying map for Northbridge. LLC, same issue. Yeah.
I don't have anything more to say. It's this. It's freedom of laws.
Just creating those thoughts. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Julie, and I missed it. Second by. Second by Mark to approve. Any discussion? Darling. I need some glasses. You did her what? Ultra ballot. The problem is when people's on top of it. That I know it's a square, right? The level. So I can't read it. Okay, the motion's carried now. I can't wait till January. It'll be awesome. All right, Harrison Heights number three, do it development. Jeff.
The only thing I would say on this is this is the third phase of this development. Um, it's one and two are almost full of new homes. Uh, last seventy-five and ninety-five through ninety-eight. Our front up again, who live in the pride will be serviced by the interior more and that awful wooden, because the wooden isn't such restricted normally. Otherwise, everything else is similar to the other cases.
There are motion approach. Motion by Mark, second by Darling. Any discussion? Ultra ballot. One record show the motion would prove us past unanimously. There is a certified survey map for Bruce and Shirley Johnson from Woodville. Yeah.
We have extra territorial planning authority under this one. This is Woodville. We have no issues with it. So we're.
Motion by Matt, second by Julie to approve. Any discussion? Ballot. Motion is carried unanimously. I'll plot, we think that was true. Yeah, any comments?
Well, we'll comment on it in the fact that this is a development that we'll be sharing in the closet of our. Uh, business cart with. So we, um, have a mid-re development room that outlines all of that. The rest of this is. Based to this development to forty blocks.
There are motion to approve. Motion by Mark, second by. Barrow Lane to approve. Any discussion? Which ballot? Motion to approve us past unanimously. Came out court, certified survey man. Can I speak to this?
Sure. So this is, uh, the Jason to the property that the village bought last year for a future park. Um, during the discussions with the property owner to the south. Uh, in an interest in installing a fence and we determined that there was a storm sword line that went from Kenny and Port to the back. Um, I reminded that storm sewer was not in a painting. So there was no way for the village to maintain it. So as part of those discussions, um, it was agreed upon that he would go out and get a C S M and work with the village to dedicate in peace map and maintain that storm sewer and then include. The work and the cost for the C S M, we would. Give him the additional, uh, wood. Woodage along that, uh, pathway, along that starts with line, uh, to maintain a fence with the understanding that should in the future, we have to do any maintenance, we may have to. Remove first portions of that fence. But, uh, we thought that this was a win for the village to begin this storm sewer and invasion. And for him to be able to maintain a fence that should this become a, a hurricane would give him some rights.
There's a motion by Scott, second by Mike, will crew. Any discussion? It's. It's.
I'm thinking, yeah, I just have a question for you. Where are we with this in terms of? Residents, the last I thought I remembered is that we had done a survey, the number came back that people were in favor of the comments said something else. So where are, do we ever go back and try and clarify that? Can you just tell?
We have another survey on the books that we're gonna be releasing in the new year. Clarify some additional things and see if we can get some different input on the moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Vote to ballot. The record show the motion of proof is passed unanimously. Hey, um, this came up at a. Couple meetings ago that. We were looking to buy. A suggestion to buy more bachelor books and Vicki got the numbers here. And Vicki, you're recommending four additional bachelor books for.
Immediately.
Yeah, immediately. Yeah, and but just for right now, tonight. So we're gonna buy more in the future, but, but all we need for the next election is four. For a total of eight thousand forty-four dollars. There's a motion by Lancaster and a second by Mike. Any discussion? Vote ballot. But. Purpose, and I guess we can get them. We can even get them on time. All right.
Yeah, President, um, I'd like to make a motion to combine items B and U. To change orders to, uh, change orders with the heat breaks and. Um, possible are. It's time to choose.
If I made a second to be corrected, can I am Jamie, well, I think it was the wrong, can I do Jamie? That's a separate item and then pick it up at K.
Okay, fine, sorry.
Okay, so J is separate. Well, let's do J first, but you know, we don't get back, we'll get back. Okay, uh, you have the approval of the fuel management system for. Thirty thousand dollars and change.
So if I may, Madam Chair, there's, there is some money left in our fund you will need. We're waiting for the final billing from the county on signals. So depending on what back looks like, we have to hopefully be fine by the end of the year. So whatever's left, we would use towards the fuel management system and that is to be able to allow the departments to. Fuel usage over a fuel process. Right now, there is no, uh, mechanism to do.
So are we looking at a maximum cost then of the thirty thousand that I should have? Could it be less than that?
It could be less than that if we use our.
So, but, but this, this is a not to exceed, uh, not to exceed, not.
Correct, and then, then it takes care of all your.
Um, looks like there's a motion by Julie and a second by Scott. Will approve. Any discussion? Vote ballot. All right, motion is passed unanimously. Okay, now you make.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to combine. What is A and U for?
All second. Second by Julie. Any discussion? Any questions on any of the angels? One of us. The opportunity to confirm, finish the vote on combining them. Well, trustee, there's people, there's motion, a second. So, all right. Motion to combine just nationally chat.
So then we wait till about seven, six hundred thousand dollars. Seeing these, uh, various projects or with some questions and to where those. So we spent some of those because we did additional projects this year. Um, the rest of them will be carried over and used for next two projects. Um, growth project and then, um. The other thing I wanted to just state is the. Final boss of the state hard road project after France was a. Item in, I think there was a catchment here. That is on that, but it's about three hundred and some thousand dollars all the way through the big fan. So then one point seven million dollar budget turned out to be fairly reasonably priced projects.
Any other questions or comments, guys? And Ryan and Bond to stay here. All right, so we're up to review the draft plans for Runway Park. Vote ballot. We are, we are, okay, motion by Scott, second by Julie. To approve. Motion's carried unanimously. Now it can move on. All right, Chad.
So in your package is two, um, master plans that resulted that you put together. Um, basically, they're the same except for one and the. Cave leg that kind of goes up to this detention pond with. Evening bathroom. Um, there was a group of neighbors and the neighborhood that local, uh, lady was able to pull together and the first. A with the fact they talks about comments from the neighbors. Um, one of the comments that I heard over and over again was it's viewing that concerns about concern that. Kids going up there to the storm water pond and stuff. So since two was created to reward that. Um, based on a concern that I've received, I would recommend the board's board considers the actual tool in that. Um, pathway, but everything else seems to be in check in the neighborhood or kids are in agreement with this. So our next step. After this would be the work pretending another public meeting and then starting implementation. The project is a hundred and eighty thousand for the base structures, a hundred and twenty thousand for. Cyclops boulders, man sleeping. The village will be respecting what's like a hundred and twenty thousand. And then the contract, the contract with the base structures, of course, would be a hundred eighty. Um, and that would be paid with the three hundred thousand that we're getting from the developer, um, on December twenty-third.
So you're looking for option B.
We look for it, watching.
So a motion to approve option B. Oh, ocean by. Motion by Matt, second by. Darling to. Motion by Matt, second by Darlene to approve option B. Any discussion? Any special, no, vote ballot. And the motion to approve option B is passed unanimously. All right, we have an offer to purchase. From Earthwise Energies, Chad.
Yes, so this is the purchase last time in the classroom, the purchase of an IT firm that would. It looked into the wind there, they did have a letter. Um, of intent originally, so this is the document in order to.
It's a motion by. Second, later on, so. And second by Mike, will approve, any questions or comments? Any discussion, vote ballot. Motion to approve is passed unanimously. Stuff, we have. Request to change insurance companies. To Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company. Chad.
So the two gentlemen from Thibault are in the audience, and I would just ask if the board would move it before, they have a quick five-minute. And presentation about who they are. Um, and then we can launch through some of the specifics and why we as board staff feel that this is a good change for the.
All good. A lot of gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for the pleasure of. Finding an overview of our company to, uh, to this board. Uh, and I will, will certainly not disappoint in keeping this brief with, given your long agenda. So Cities and Villages is a mutual insurance company. A mutual insurance company means that as members you own the company. So we are a nonprofit organization that provides healthy dividends back to its members. Uh, who are we? Uh, we represent fifty-six members in two thousand twenty-five. We hope that. Village Harrison would be the fifty-seventh member that represents about one-third the population of the state of Wisconsin, and given the communities that are part of our company. Uh, we value stability, we value strategic partnerships. Uh, case in point, and what makes it make different. Uh, is that we provide dedicated service teams to all of our members. So the village would receive individuals that would support your staff. Uh, that would be able to provide HR services, that would be able to provide law enforcement, uh, sir, uh. Consultative type services, they would also provide the handholding of. Uh, walking through the maze of insurance bureaucracy and red tape. Uh, that would be Ben Rank, who's sitting behind me, uh, who oversees the underwriting, as well as member services retention, as well as. Uh, areas such as, uh, uh, training. Uh, we also provide training and the service, uh, nature of the dedicated service teams are individualized and customized to villages' needs. Uh, training is really what our hallmark is. Uh, we provide a great deal of training, uh, probably upwards of maybe. Uh, eighteen thousand hours of training that went out just this last year. We do it virtually, we do it onsite. Uh, here with the village as well as in our offices in Wauwautosa. Uh, services for training are either on the safety side, we'll do facility inspection. Uh, we'll also provide, uh, training for management staff and leadership. Uh, and that provides for greater stability of your staff and better guidance and direction. We also pride ourselves in community, uh, within this area. We also, in the Fox Valley, we also have the city of Appleton, Manasha and Nina. Also members, founding members of Cities and Villages Mutual. Uh, and you would provide, uh, is purposeful on our end is that we establish communities. Uh, among our members, uh, whether it's in southeast Wisconsin, Madison, uh, the Wausau area, uh, as far north as Green Bay. Uh, to, of course, the Fox Valley area. Um, so with that, uh, we pride ourselves is, uh, ensuring that our members don't leave. Uh, and that means our members are happy, we provide stable pricing. Uh, since inception on our liability program, uh, we have averaged about two to three percent, uh, per year, so. Uh, the fact that our board of directors are the members themselves, uh, that they are. Finance directors, city attorneys, risk managers, representing a cross-section of members. Uh, we know the fiscal challenges, uh, that the village has. Uh, and that all of our members have, and so that is reflected in our pricing. Uh, so because the members own the company. Uh, it is indicative of the pricing that you receive, because they're the ones who receive it firsthand. Uh, so that, that's just a very brief overview of our company, uh, and a thank you again for your consideration.
Yeah, did you have? Honestly?
Sure, so we both, full disclosure, the, uh, the current. Rider of insurance for the village totally yearly premium is above ninety-one thousand. Uh, the cement premium is about a hundred and one thousand. Um, I will note that last year the village spent just over ten thousand dollars on official training. Um, and there's a number of training and different services that the. Cement provides that we have, have an interest in writing to our staff, so we are recommending approval of this, uh, change.
Questions? Comments?
Yeah, so. Just. You're saying we. Put their own money in training, that should just bound the line, I wonder, I don't know what made it.
It's, it's, it's a wash when you look at the.
I get that, but. It just makes it look like it's.
Because yeah, the training is on the backside and I didn't have anything.
But it's a wash.
I don't, it's just.
Any other questions or comments? And then we, uh, so there's a motion by Darlene. Second by Julie. Will through, the switch to civic. Vote ballot. On record show, we have switched unanimously, unanimously, so thank you guys for coming. All right. We are up to ordinance, is this supposed to be ordinance B twenty-two-four dash fifteen? Like just that fingerprint, instead of twenty-four fifteen, it's supposed to be twenty-two.
My website is our B twenty-four resolution.
Okay, all right, I was just double checking. Okay, so ordinance B twenty-four dash fifteen, amending chapter one oh three. Regarding impact, the rebound schedules and implications from the three D section, one oh three dash two-three-one fifty, transportation impact B. Chad?
So I had a discussion.
Okay, guys, have a safe trip back.
I had a discussion with attorney last day, so. Um, first of all, the, uh, earth impact, the ordinance, references dollar values that are. Old, and since we changed these on a yearly basis, the first change, you'll see in the, um, the document is adding. Um, information that the amounts are specified in the village fee potential, so as we change the rates. Uh, we don't have to always go back and update the ordinance, so those are the first amount of changes, then the second. Changes is adding, but section, subsection B, the transportation attack B. For residential, non-residential, commercial, industrial, um, those are not entirely, so in the. Uh, the schedule, but also in the separate attachment of. Is there?
It's coming up next, it's next.
Oh, it's, yeah, so yeah, so basically it adds the language of the, what's required by, um, the. Imposing the transportation impact B, um, language, and I don't know, do you want to say any more of that? So that, those are the changes to the ordinance, so we were recommending approval of it.
There's a motion by Scott. Second by Mark, will approve. Any questions or comments? And non-vote ballot. On the record to approve, as we passed unanimously. Next up is B schedule. B twenty-two-four dash fourteen, okay, that makes more sense.
So the, um, what we're doing here is we're doing inflationary changes for the impact fees. We read what, um, the new year, and it's something we do every. Uh, December, November, December for the January first, for new construction permits. Uh, and then in, and we're also then adding the transportation impact fees. On page seven of the B schedule, so the single-family residential development, giving me two thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars. Commercial industrial is point eight. Four cents times the square foot, and then my industrial is point six, uh, three. Sixty-three cents per square foot. Um, what we're going to do is, uh. Come back to the board at a later date in the new year with, when we have time to go through and look at the needs assessments for all of the. Impact fees, when the, uh, recent involvement with the fire station, future police station and earth improvements, so. Um, this is just kind of getting us to that point that January one, and then we're gonna come back with, uh, changes. After that to reflect, uh, the traditional needs that the village has to downsize part of their kit and boom.
Um, Mike? You already made more.
Yes, but I have one question on for the fire impact fee and law enforcement fee. You know, we do have more runs. The multi-family than we do single-family. Feel good with that as far as.
It's not calculated by one time. That fee isn't based on how many times you're going to the moment, and that fee is based on the. Uh, needs impact for like the fire station, yeah, but it's not operation.
But what I'm getting at. Single-family are, we are, uh, police and fires doing more, so I don't.
We understand that, but we can't argue the person for that. It's based on the, it's, it's the need assessment of the catchall clause of fire. Not the operations.
But further on the agenda, when we talk about those proposals, they're gonna look at all of those things in twenty-twenty-five. Replace the fire. Parks, all of that, and see if they all need to come. And so we're, we're hearing you. It's just, we can't get it done right now. Uh, there's a motion by Mike, second by Matt, approve. Any other discussion? Let's record show the motion to approve it passed unanimously. Okay. And then, we are to. Prove the community risk officer position, maybe a shorter title. Who wants to speak to us, Chad?
So in the budget, there was a new position, a new full-time position in the twenty-five budget for the firing permit. Um, Jared and I worked together on developing a community risk reduction officer position as a captain. It'll be an integrated J at seven four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. We did do a lot of research on surrounding communities to make sure we're competitive, and this feels like this is where. It needs to be, so we're recommending approval, so we can start to recruit them.
Is there a motion to approve of the new position? Motion by Mark, second by Julie to approve. Any questions or comments? Darling. Um, what do we miss? Do you put an add-on then?
Oh, yeah.
To open it to anybody, you don't just pick somebody.
It will be posted in growing the next year. Uh, I believe you sent me the best of the Wisconsin parties, so there's some to hold their members off.
Well, okay, good, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Um, vote ballot. You can push your button, you guys. Push your button harder, Jared. Oh, oh, you guys abstained because of fire department, okay, okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Mike and Matt have both abstained because they're both on the fire department. And the rest of us voted unanimously to approve the new position. You're gonna get some help, kindly, Jared. Okay, next up is an approval for a contract with Barrett to provide general consulting services. To analyze villages' kids, one through six, Chad.
There's nothing more than really stayed most, you know, you do this on an annual basis, so we're just looking to have them look at all of our districts. Everything makes sense, and we. And give us a report of the current status and closure and all of that good stuff.
Uh, there's. Okay, motion by Matt, second by Scott to approve. Any other discussion? Vote ballot. And the motion to approve is passed unanimously. Amendment to the agreement with the developers agreement for busy metal sub-division, check.
So this is an amendment to agreement number one, um, this is in regards to the village. As a policy that that we do not allow gating after November fifteenth because of freeze thaw. Um, and so there's some language in the current agreement about the. Um, about that and about an additional need for warranty and. Performance on letter credit, but since we already have a lot of credit still in place with them, because we don't. Um, do the final work, work of the roads and the urban gutter and anything of that stuff till the three years old after two, three stop singles. Feeling is we don't need another warranty for this gating that that's already happened, because they want to start putting in houses this winter. So we're basically removing that language over the agreement, that we still don't let it go against, so we're gonna. Take care of the roles in a final, uh, layer.
There's a motion by Matt. Second, second by Julie to approve. Any discussion? Record show the motion to approve is passed unanimously. Now we have an approval for development agreement on Harrison page three. Chad, do you have any comments?
The only comment I'd say is that this does reflect the increases of expectation fee. And the payment and new apartment fee based on previous. Uh, proving by the board, anyways, everything else is the same as the last two pages.
Mr. Motion to approve, motion by Mark. Second by Darlene to approve. The bell for agreement for Harrison page three, any discussion? Ballot. Record show the motion to approve is passed unanimously. All right, it went out, favorite subject right time. Okay, um. Andy, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, the, I mean, uh. Andy Ross Mycel's report, uh, is, is in the. Eighty minutes here, I don't really have much to add, we went over the counties, um. When ordinance, and it basically is a. Verbatim restoration of the PSC requirements. It's just spelled out, we, we did it by reference to make it. More succinct, basically just adopting the PSC. They went through and typed the whole thing out, unfortunately, uh, when reviewing it, uh. Andy Ross must realize that there's some inconsistencies with. Within their ordinances as far as the setback requirements. Um. I personally contacted the lead, uh, he was said that we should stick with the PSC requirements. Um. The county's policy only applies to unincorporated areas, so it doesn't apply to. Uh, Harrison. Uh, but other than what's in here, we recommend sticking with the, uh. Policy as adopted earlier this year.
Um. There's no action to be taken because we're not making any changes. But for informational purposes, um, our ordinance is probably actually stronger. All right, we're ready, move on. Moving on then. Okay. You're talking about controls for engineering contact services for Harrison utilities.
Yeah, Vicki has been, no, it's separate, emailed on Friday, and she gave me a updated memo. Um, we received on Friday, uh, eight, I mean, sorry, um. We sent it to eight companies, we received three. Old McMan, MSA, and Birbeck. Uh, Brandon and I had a chance to review them on Friday afternoon, and, um, based on the. Uh, input and, and making streamlined internal processes for our residents and developers, we recommended. Van, who also serves as the village engineer to become the utility engineer. Uh, I should also note that the lead person, the, I mean, man, kind of was, was. Billy, we. The ones that submitted, and he would be doing the majority of working and coordinating the majority of the work, so we're recommending. The board can consider McMahon to serve as the Harrison utilities engineer, and then. Staff negotiated contract for certain services.
There's a motion by Matt. By Darlene. Sir, any discussion? Questions, comment? No, vote ballot. Left the record, show that the motion to approve, Matt. Utilities engineer, pass unanimously. Me, I think it's gonna be busy. All right. Okay. I've got a verbal for. Back to covenants for Harrison Thomas. Yes, okay.
In D C.
I just will try and find my chat trees, right? All right. Chad, can I speak to this?
Sure. So in September, the board denied a request to allow staff to develop a poverty tool about trees in the. Um law here at the owner's expense. Um currently, there are seven properties on. Back and drive, Park Way and Mossy Port that had installed trees in their lawn terrace without obtaining right-of-way permits. On October ninth, we sent letters to those folks after the board's decision with the notice that they need to remove the trees by November thirtieth. At today, none of the property owners have removed their trees. Before the Department of Public Works goes in there, those trees out, we just want to make sure that the board is on, the building board is on board with that. Um because we believe owners probably won't be happy with the decision when you show. So we're looking for some guidance from the board. How we should handle these existing trees that are already there.
Can these trees be saved? Oh, sorry.
Matt, Matt. Did you um?
Can I stay with my motion? It's certainly not a recommendation before, so. I've actually. Thought about this quite a bit. Done some research. Um there's things that trees help with stormwater, the D N R. There's been various unofficial policies probably in the village. Flash town going back years. And I actually spent some time driving around the village. There are trees in the right of way all over the place. In this village. And. I don't think we can single out these few trees here then. I certainly don't want us going about moving trees in the right of way over the village as well. There's some very. Nice established trees in right of ways. There's stuff on, you can tell with the way fire hydrants are lined up and things too and uh. Some of the other subdivisions without side box that people didn't know exactly where the property line is, but. When you know that the fire hydrant's the line, that the trees over the line or half over the line and stuff, so. I'm making a motion that as of December seventeenth, twenty twenty four tonight. That any trees that are in the right of way are hereby grandfathered. With the condition. That. Anyone with any trees the village would identify, the homeowners need to get a right-of-way permit. And the staff need to said be able to approve that permit to like give some leeway if there's a hazard that you could deny that said permit. And then going forward. The village. Really needs to enforce, that's why I'm giving this date. Um. We need to do a better job as a village, educating residents and enforcing ordinances. Shouldn't be a complaint basis type thing because that leads to unfairness. Um this separate from the motion, this is just for my explanation that I want to make in this motion. So make a motion and then I did. Okay, so my motion, I'm making my comment now. Is. As a village. I want to challenge staff with figuring out. How can things be enforced and applied more uniformly? I don't believe we should be on a complaint basis. Because that leads to. Unfairness and leads to certain things not being applied evenly. Um. As staff is out doing various activities, whether you smell by inspection, various things. There should be proactive things. Um. Taking place to make sure we're treating everybody. Fairly. And and maybe there's some education that also needs to take place in some of these new subdivisions as these houses get established. Um. Residents are contacting us to get their garbage recycling cans, for example. And I do believe people don't realize what they can and can't do.
Let's stay on topic.
I am, that's a part of this, I just. Believe that we can do a better job educating our residents somewhere they can do it, well, well, thank you.
Okay. Julie, I think somebody else will. Oh, God, it wasn't.
Thank you. So I'm gonna say it's not fair. That people can come in and just do whatever they want because I have a ditch. Can't fill my ditch because it would be independent to. The flow of the waterway in my street. We can't just allow people just to come in. We have rules and ordinances. And people violate them. It's not fair for someone who does obey the ordinances, who gets a plot when they get their. Um title and it says, and plot where the village right away is. I say no, I mean, it's not, you have to be fair, which is why you have to enforce. The ordinances. If we're going to allow people just to come in and just do whatever they want and then say, well, go ahead. Well, then let's just get rid of the ordinance. It's the ordinances junk. You're making excessive exceptions. For the rules. For people who've. Beg for forgiveness afterwards, then we have to change the ordinance. So I say no. I will be keen. If we allow the time or the people who have the trees in place are not that old to be able to remove them in the springtime, I'm okay with that. But we can't just allow people to put trees. In the village right away over a street and then come in and say, well, I want to, I want people here and I want to be mad if I if I don't get it because I violated. It's like if you don't have a speed limit sign on a country road. Is it okay to go sixty-five? There's not posted, they don't know. Come on, I mean, we have to enforce the rules. It's fair. It's only fair that people who have ditches and people who have obeyed the rules. Have to obey the rules. It's not fair to just let some people do whatever they want and then come back and say, oh, I'll just pay a fine and. Because what's gonna happen is it's gonna keep perpetuating. Keep perpetuating. We have to enforce the law or the ordinances or we get ready to complete. Thank you.
Julie, yes, um I actually, I'm in support of grandfathering the trees as well and. If these residents had not, they didn't planted them after September, you know, you know, show of defiance, I would agree if they should come out, but. If these are well-established trees, what I'm going to say is, you know, do people know about the ordinances and some could argue that. It's the residents' responsibility to know about that, but if they didn't, they didn't. Um so I'm in favor of, you know, I support what you're saying, Scott, about, you know, having a policy and communicating it. Uh I think that's important, but I'd like to see these grandfathered. I also agree with trustee Lancaster. I know that. Put that on an agenda for a future meeting to review the tree policy, but there's a lot of passion out there about tree and. I just think we need to provide guidance, but if somebody didn't know. You know, if there's a problem with the trees, if they become a hazard or if they, you know, aren't cared for by the owner, then we can too take action, but. I don't want to mess with things that are already there and have been there prior to September. Yeah, I also agree with grandfathering in the existing trees. I know in the past that a lot of these ordinances weren't. Weren't uh. Enforced and so.
Yeah, let's change the the search ordinance.
Well, yeah. I I go.
We're gonna keep making exceptions.
But um but I I agree with grandfathering and. And if we can make it effective tonight, but any future right of way will have no trees. Who's next, darling?
I agree with Scott. I I'm sorry, but here's 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 the deal. If you make a rule. Anybody can say, you know, the rule. I could do it and say, I didn't know. Right? And and then how would you let them and not me? Just to be fair, I think you gotta be fair and the rules are rules. That's what it is, that's how I feel.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. How long have these trees been supposedly planted?
Some of them are probably. In the last. Four months, some have been there, whatever.
So you can pull them, they can be pulled out and replanted, correct?
They, every tree that is there isn't, they would all be able to be transferred.
Okay, so they're able, they can pull all the trees and be in compliance and put it on their side of the property. Sorry. That's a lot to say, thanks.
Matt? You know, next.
I guess, I guess, well, my only thing to say, I mean, I do believe in the importance of enforcing ordinances. But I I still stand by my original comments that I do believe trees need to be grandfathered here and it's not about these seven trees or eight trees that are here. My understanding is a few of these have been here for years. Correct you up, these trees in question, a few of these have been there for.
Uh two of them. Two of them that I know of have been there for probably. Three years, right? So, but they, and that being said, the stump isn't probably six inches plus, they're all. They're not, I don't know what kind of trees they are, the gentleman on the Yachtman. Because they're a very slow-growing tree and. They don't shed their, it's gotta be a hardwood, they don't shed their leaves quick. So I don't know what it is for a tree.
Yeah, my 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 larger concern here is. If we go remove these trees from the right of way. Then also be applying fairness. Then you should be removing any tree in the village right away, and there are dozens and dozens and dozens of trees in the right of way, some that are twenty, thirty, forty years old. I just don't think that's the right message of what to do in nature. So that that is why, again, I'll say I think we should grandfather, I think that's before tonight, and that's how I'll be voting, so thank you.
Okay, so Matt has a motion to. Grandfather and any existing trees in the right way, starting from this point forward. But. There will not be trees allowed in the right way.
And is there a, is there a part of your motion that?
And my motion was they must take out a right of way from it and the village needs to be, for those, while you're still has some oversight here of the existing grandfathered trees to make sure they're not.
And. Darling, you just seconded that? Well, I did, but I don't agree with it. Oh, you just, you just want, what I'm just saying, you just just move off the land and I still vote, all right, so. So the motion is to grandfather the existing trees and include a right-of-way permit process. You prepared to vote your ballot? Can you mark yourself in?
Yeah.
He needs, he needs to figure the last two just like me. Here, that's smart, each for sugar.
No one, but.
Well.
Oh, wait, I have.
Here's the vote you bow. So the motion is to grandfather in the existing trees and. No more from this point on. There are three Ns and four I's, so the motion to grandfather has passed. With the four to three though. Wait, are we ready to move on? Wait, three, right. Approval of the protected covenants for Harrison Thomas Park for our can. Chad, would you like to speak with this one?
Yeah, so these files that cross the business park, the protected covenants and differences is made. Uh reverence and design guidelines of the board this previously included sort of take on. Instruction that we're looking and looking for like this.
Your motion to approve? Motion by Julie, second by Mark to approve the protective permanence for Harrison Thomas Park, any discussion? Vote your ballot. At the record show, the motion to approve has passed unanimously. Hey, Jeff, you're spending a lot of money. There's some, I request motion to approve of. Of that compact track loader. And the excavator and tree trimmer attachments.
So the um public works department in the capital of the new plan for twenty twenty five. And multiple pieces of equipment that totaled with three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um the cost for the skid term that was original budget, there's fifty thousand came in at eighty-nine. A, and the purchase of the excavator, which is an is an upgrade from the uh current excavator. Uh with an attachment, so our tree trimming and the trailer is. One hundred and sixty-nine thousand up from the hundred and sixty thousand. So on the spreadsheet, that's the second page in your packet, it outlines out and tends to um bonus, I mean particularly. Um with the savings of the out truck, so the we the twenty-four budget included the replacement of the. Uh project at four hundred and seventy-one thousand, all in that. It's about some three hundred and eighty-one thousand, so there's about ninety thousand dollars in savings. Um so this, if word goes in, we'll end up with six hundred and forty-eight dollars in differences, the. Uh department is not replacing the F three fifty utility um body truck. Because Jeff and the staff believe we have at least another two to three years on that piece of equipment. Um other than that, everything would stay the same. Uh this excavator is a more powerful one. Um than what we have and uh staff is recommending.
Motion by Julie. Second by Mark. Will approve. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. So, two questions. What, so what can would be more powerful excavator? What kind of projects without some particular, but I get, but why is, what's the village looking to do with? But they have to upgrade.
Right now, there's a lot of walls, concrete end walls on our. Some ponds, some road ditches that we are unable to put ours, so we have to rent a machine to do it. We are ecstatic part of it. Um we have a uh pecan head port. That we are able to go all rather than rent it for a survey of it, we can go out and. Mulch our roadside. In the, in the fall or spring, more more or less in the spring. There's, there's. There's so many things to have a smaller machine is nice, but we're finding that. Rather than crawl in a backyard, we can rent a machine for a hundred dollars or a dollar a day. And do that rather than. Try to crawl in with our big machine and. Have to fix up everybody's lawns. There's, we can rent a smaller machine easier than what we can justify. Using our steel.
Thank you. And just my other comment would be. And I know things can change, but seeing we did just approve the budget, whatever we can do to try to have some of this at budget time, I just think it. More transparent to the public if this involved in in the budget or in the budget process, so you understand, oh, thank you.
There's a motion by. Julie and a second by Mark to approve. Any other discussion? Vote your ballot. At the record show, the motion to approve has passed unanimously. Okay. And this is. To answer your question from before, Mike, this is the contract with ours to update the needs assessments. Related to the park fire and law enforcement impact fees.
So it is what it is, it's gonna look at all of those, we have a bunch of questions, they've been charged, we're like, yeah, from putting to kind of make sure that. We're charging the impact fees uh with what our needs are, so we'll work with elders to update if they dummy with a pass. They originally knew these, so it made sense. This is twenty-two thousand five hundred, seventy-five hundred would be charged to each one of those fees. Um respectively, and then we can come back to um updates to those fees.
So there's a motion by Matt, the second by Gach to approve. Any other discussion or comments? Vote your ballot. The motion will prove has passed unanimously. All right. Now there's a request for the contract with elders for developing the utility capital recovery assistance plan for future growth. Okay, there's something about these names, guys. Chad, before you conclude.
So this was a future agenda item that trustee Lancaster had on the on the. Agenda for a number of months related to if politicians or the states have an extension of services to those. Um so we, one of the first things we needed to do was update our utility ordinance, which the board did last year. Um now we're at the point of looking at all of the different funding mechanisms to find. Um these types of improvements to extend services on the general areas and try to. Uh encourage indoor development in a number of areas. Where development may be occurring, so what we're hoping to do um between elders and now McMahon, we need to have a. Um work on a plan of uh kind of working through what those plots would look like. Um how they could be funded, um cash flowing, some of those things and making sure that the utility is lined up for. Future extension of services, so um I don't know, those are, you want to say?
Well, there's a motion by Matt and a second by Mike to approve. Any discussion? Vote your ballot. Vote your ballot. At the record. Probes passed unanimously. Right, coming down the whole stretch here. We have, they're finding that the Manitowoc Road Speed Study. No, no action is required. But does anybody have a question on the study? Thank you for coming tonight. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to move on then? Yeah.
My question, so, I know this was a test to see if the village can do this. Would you say your test was acceptable, please mind, something is in the future to allow?
Yeah, so we, um, are doing, I think the speech been recorded today and I had to take it out again, and put it on Woodland, so we are doing. Similar one in Woodland, and then if this works, we can continue to study other roads if we, we. Word feels, doesn't, then.
Any other questions or comments? No actions required, so we can move on. All right. Uh, resolution B, twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, establishing the voting locations and combining awards to the twenty twenty-five election cycle. The information is in your cabinet. There's a motion by Matt, second by Scott. Oops, what are we doing here, yep, to approve. Any questions or comments? Vote your ballot. Motion to approve has passed unanimously. Christ, rocks still have us.
Yeah.
All right, uh. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, authorized in the borrowing of four hundred fifty thousand dollars finance to number five, and purchase for Harrison Commerce Park. Chad, anything to add to this?
The award had previously approved this, we had called another property use of general fund hours, we can view. Or then we'll reverse the general fund for that, um, and then ultimately, yeah, that's, we need to generate a different.
Motion by Matt, second by Scott, to approve, any questions or comments? Motion to approve as a very unanimous.
Did I say something?
Sure.
Won't thank everybody, give a stamp, because we just went through this huge agenda. All of you that did your homework and owe you one, it's interesting, but we didn't spend all, maybe while I got a little job, thank you.
Yeah. And I would like to do it like this in the future, so that if you, if there's questions, talk to staff before the meeting, if you had any questions resolved ahead of time. We need additional information, this worked out great. Great, yeah.
It just wants to second that, well, um, and thank that to end all, act already a little earlier this time, that's helpful to give the time to. Read and, and do what you research needed, so, thank you.
Yeah, good job, guys. All right, you know, the list of future agenda items, I think we're starting to skinny that list up, or starting to. Attack on these future agenda items, which is a good thing.
Oh, I mean, what's the moment, the session, with the time I break?
Um, I've heard a couple of agenda. And, and one thing, one thing, there's a, okay, I believe that, I don't know, yes, um, two things that I have, and the first one is. Uh, what I'd like to put on the future agenda item is getting aggressive about pursuing senior housing for this, this community. Um, I don't know if that looks like, you know, independent living with cottages or, you know, multifamily building with apartments, but. I just feel like this is a gaping hole in our community, and I'd just like to talk about, you know, how we can bring some developers in, who might be interested in proposing. Something that we'd all accept. That's one, if someone wanna chime in with Julian on that one. So, Julian, Julian on that. Right, and then the second thing, I believe everybody gets the municipality magazine. And in it, there was an article that talked about a lawsuit on social media, um, Linkey versus Free, and it, it just gave a whole bunch of. You know, legalities and advice on how. Boards and, you know, local government agencies can protect themselves against doing the wrong thing on social media. And I know that, you know, a lot of the current board members don't participate a lot on social media, but that doesn't mean that that won't happen in the future. So I'm gonna recommend that, uh, we either put that on a future agenda item, you know, turn that over to staff to kind of take a look at this article. And take a look at the recommendations for best practices, so that we can just stay above board on this and not, you know, avoid future potential issues.
We did have a discussion internally about that, and about developing a social media policy, so it's.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't need to put it on this future agenda item or not to?
Our goal is to bring something back to the board.
Thank you.
All right, um, and, and I wanna, I wanna review the next meeting dates to make sure, because we, we've added a couple of extra meeting dates, guys. Um, so if you got your calendar. False five, is the, is January ninth confirmed now? For the tour, and then, so we are going to meet here first.
It's gonna be here and then we'll carpool them over to Green though.
That's same time, yes, same bedtime, same thing.
Yeah, so that's a Thursday night then, at six P M. And then, uh. Tour on the sixteenth.
Yeah, the, my apologies, the word tour is supposed to be after fire station.
What?
January ninth, twenty, it, it.
Oh, okay, so.
The margin.
Okay, so January sixth.
It was a board meeting here.
So board meeting, and it was a special meeting.
Here, here, and then that's with the Kelly McConney Sheriff's Department in a closed session.
Right, okay, so that's, and that's gonna be a closed session, and that's at six o'clock again, correct? That's a six o'clock again, right, so. All right, then the next regular meeting is gonna be January twenty eighth. And then followed by February twenty fifth.
So we, we got one on the ninth, the sixteen, and then the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, correct. So January is gonna be a full month. That's, so, fire station's one. All right. Now, if you'd like to make that motion go in a closed session, that'd be awesome.
I'd like to make a motion, go in a closed session, and turn on three.
All right, now that this is our call, so.
Bye.
Nine, five.
Bye, bye, bye.
All right, we are in full segment. Thank you, this is amazing.
There's a lot of food over here, so you need to eat it.
All right.
If you want our packets.
Some of the positions.